Well, good evening. It's 6 o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can I have roll call, please?
Chairperson Blake.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Selman.
Here.
Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Brookman. Commissioner Dale. Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome, Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you.
Wonderful to have you.
I'm excited to be here.
Yes.
It was an honor to be recommended for Mr. Doster's seat after such a relatively short period on the County's Commission, so it's an honor to be here, so I'm looking forward to serving, so thank you all.
Thank you. Would you do us the honors and lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, now, don't get crazy. Well, good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting on this date of May 25. We now have a public comment on the agenda, so you're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select a representative to express the opinions of the group. So, do we have any written comments at this time?
We don't have any written comments.
All right, and so do I have any appearance of citizens? Yes, please, come on up to the podium.
The normal ones back. Yesterday, it was a different one, so, good evening.
Evening.
Oops, sorry. My name's Heather Essman, 2020 Lincoln Road, I live in Yuba City. I don't know, this pin was here last night, too, it doesn't belong to me. I was going to try to say something a few months ago, it's been a while. Thank you, but anyway, so. So, I basically wanted to talk about the importance of sustainability and planning for the future, hoping that when things come up to you, that you'll take some of this into consideration. So, you might have heard already that there are some plans by 2035 that all new passenger trucks and cars sold in California be emission, zero emission vehicles, right? And the goal is to have 1.5 million zero emission vehicles on, in the state by that time. Audi is, I don't know how to say it, I speak German, so I always say it in German, sorry. Audi plans to have 20 models by 2025, that's three years from now. GM CO says that they'll be able to catch Tesla up with EV sales by 2025, that's three years from now. And CA Energy Commission says that California needs 1.2 million charging stations, and they currently only have 70,000. I currently have an electric plug-in hybrid, and there's one place in town, there's 70,000 people in here, there's one place in Yuba City that I can charge my vehicle, and that's in front of Chipotle's. There's three places I could charge my vehicle in Marysville, but there's only one place I can charge my vehicle here in Yuba City. There is also vehicle chargers for Ford, the kind of plug that you can use for a Ford in front of Target, and then the ones in front of Chipotle are varying, they've got different types, so you can use different types of vehicles there, so at least there's that. But what's really needed is that every hotel that comes here needs to have charging stations, that's clear, right? That if there's retail, if there's grocery stores, that's where the charging stations need to be. Somebody who comes with a concept of like a gas station charger, I don't see how that would work, because if I needed to charge my vehicle, I'm not going to go to a gas station and sit there for 20 minutes, I'm going to go into the mall and go shopping, right? It's not going to be something like that. Or, for example, if I'm going to drive into Sacramento, or ride into Sacramento on the bus, then I want the charger station at the park and ride. We don't have any of that right now. Also, AB 100 has, for parking requirements for electric vehicles, that if the tenant requests, then the landlord has to provide that to them. So I just want you to think about that whenever you get an approval for, say, for example, another gas station, and not necessarily in the new development area down south, but somewhere up here, if most of the vehicles within the next three years are going to switch over, is there going to be demand? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, something to educate us all about. Do we have any other public comments at this time? All right. Thank you, so we'll move to Planning Commission business. Are there any fellow commissioners, agenda modifications in which you foresee? Or need?
No, and I move to approve the minutes?
Do you want to move to the minutes, or?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm telling you, I'm one step ahead, for some reason, all day today. I apologize. My boss hated it, too, so.
So unless, let me back up for a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
Minutes. Does everybody, is everyone all right with them? We have a motion on the floor, if so? And a second?
I'll second it.
We had Lori second, thanks, John. All right, so all in favor of approval of our January 26th, it feels like 1999 minutes, but there were 2022 minutes, please say aye.
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 Aye? Abstain? All right, thank you. All right, so minutes pass. All right, business item, our first one is the consideration of a requested two-year extension of time for Development Plan 17-01 and Use Permit 17-08, the Woodward Street Hotel. We all remember this project, yes? All right, staff report, please, Ben.
Yes, so really, it's pretty straightforward, they're asking for a time extension. And so, this was a big project in Yuba City. You know, pending we haven't had a new hotel in quite a long time, and so when that came through, 2017, 2018, there was a lot of work by Arnaldo and his team, to look at the design and the layout, and then how it went through, and then, so with it, there was a, due to the size, there was a development plan and a use permit for the height, because it was a little bit higher than the zoning code would allow, so through that, there was a use permit for the height. And so, really what you're looking at with this item is that they're on their second extension, and I would say it's non-typical, this is, as you've seen, some use permits come through over time, it really comes down to funding and when they start construction. And so, in the municipal code, the use permit and development plans, they're set to expire if construction is not substantially commenced within two years of the date of approval with respect to additional time approved by the Planning Commission. And the applicant has made the written request, and so, if we look at the timelines, the original approval was February 15, 2018, time flies, and then we had a time extension right before COVID, and so, fast forward two years, we're here before you, looking for that second extension to move it forward. I will say, behind the scenes, we've recently received building plans, and then with those building plans, there's also some modified site layouts going on, you know, where he's picked up a couple of different properties right here to help improve parking for the site, and so, there's some, so even though he's asking for the extension, there has been some efforts and funding put behind it to move it forward. So, with that, with this being up against the timeline for the entitlements, the request for the time extension was submitted, and so, with that, staff is proposing the environmental determination, a mitigated NEGDEC was approved by the Planning Commission, the analysis contained in that document included mitigation measures, it's still valid, no additional environmental analysis is warranted, and so, with that, we're recommending to approve the two-year extension. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll just take it down the line.
Well, I guess I have one question relevant to what was just discussed, the obvious question, is it too late for us to suggest a condition of approval that they put in some EV ports?
So, the conditions are, the conditions are set with the entitlement, but definitely staff will make that recommendation. You know, so when the building plans are coming through and with the improvement plan, a lot of times we see that currently, it's not in the zoning code as a requirement, but it's definitely, it can be a discretion as projects come forward, and you see that, and I think we're going to see more of that happen.
Yeah.
Definitely, we can make that recommendation, I can't condition it, but at the same time, I can make that recommendation.
That's what I figured.
And if you see the project again in the future, we could definitely bring that up.
So, can we do, so if, let's say, moving forward, we have a new project come in, is that something you can add? If it's brand-new, never?
Yes.
Oh.
So, when it comes to the Planning Commission, it's discretionary, and you can ask for that specific condition.
I agree, it's a great, great.
So, Ben, is the city actually looking at putting those standards in place in the long-term, or has that been on your target yet? Should this be something that we maybe recommend to the council to consider adding this to some of the standards, or is it going to be legislatively?
You know, honestly, I'm kind of waiting to see where it plays out, not that I don't want to be in front of the curve here, behind the curve, but legislatively, I know that when gas stations come through now, they're required to have.
Charging stations.
The charging stations and/or the facilities located for that, and then additionally, when there's commercial development being built, there are supposed to be so many spots designated for future EV, but it's not required to have the facilities in place yet. And so legislatively, there's been some efforts that it's, they're starting to designate some requirements for that.
And I know in a lot of situations, it's leased, that these companies come in and lease the space and then put the equipment in.
Yeah, and so, and I'm a little hesitant, because like Ms. Essman referenced, there's like three different charger types, right? And so, is it a Tesla, is it, you know, and so usually, that type of thing is somewhat market-driven, but you definitely see that happening, where a lot of hotels are starting to retrofit spots in order, because they can market it and get people to come in, and so, I'm definitely open to the idea that, you know, it probably matches some of our general plan and quality of life and our transportation model, but at the same time, I'm not quite sure where that's going to land with gas station.
They're trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
Funding that's attached to it as well.
And I would add that the city just applied for two, for a grant for two spots, so we're trying to get two locations, one at the water tower there on Reeves, and then one at the Gap, or will it be two units for chargers each, is a spot we're trying to get some to come in through the city.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Mr. Mitty, is there a limitation on the number of extensions they can apply for?
In the municipal code, no, there is not. But.
At some point, we can say no?
You definitely can.
Okay. I mean, it was somewhat rhetorical, of course, we can say no. The concern is if you have a project sitting on the books for, you know, six, eight, 10 years, at some point, there's going to be concern, the conditions of approval, the project design, those types of things need to be reevaluated, so thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item at this time? All right, seeing none, any additional comments from the commissioners? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve a two-year extension of time for Development Plan 1701 and Use Permit 17-08, Woodward Street Hotel pursuant to City Municipal Code Section 8-5.7106, resulting in a new expiration date of February 15, 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you.
Great. All right, I was going to wait till the end, but I think it makes more sense to introduce, I have a couple, Jaspreet, you've met before, she's, so I'm putting her in the line of fire, so she's going to do the next item, and then also, Doug Libby is, you know, he used to be a Sutter County, longtime principal planner, and represent the Sutter County Planning Commission for many years, and so, I've hijacked him, and he's going to present for us, too. So, if you see new faces, go easy on them.
All right. I'd like to say I'm still a bit in shock, but I'll get used to it, I'm certain of it. So Agenda Item 6 is next, for consideration, a requested two-year extension of time for Development Plan 19-04, Sutter Foods Agricultural and Cold Storage Facility, and we'll have Ms. Jaspreet.
All right, good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, I present to you Development Plan 1904, Sutter Foods Agricultural and Cold Storage Facility Time Extension. Guys, we'll probably see a pattern here tonight. So Development Plan 1904 allowed for the development of a new 64,000-square-foot agricultural processing and cold storage facility located at 2179 Franklin Road, and it was approved by Planning Commission July 22, 2020. And so, as Ben had mentioned, in the municipal code, it does allow for an extension if it is given, if the applicant has made a written request, and it is determined that the conditions have not changed, that would warrant a denial of the extension. So, back in, oh, sorry. Hit the back button. So back in March, we did receive a request from the applicant to request a two-year extension, just with the costs associated with the project and COVID-19. If approved, the development plan will now expire July 22, 2024. So here is just a diagram of the project site, so just located on Franklin Road, and then here is a site plan, kind of hard to see, but it is, I don't know how to work this thing. Maybe if I present more, I'll learn it. Here we go, right here, this guy. So their storage facility will be here, so that is what we are going to hopefully approve tonight. Here's some elevations again, pretty standard building, and then we have some south elevations on Franklin Road, and then part of the request also is to do a block wall surrounding the property. The environmental determination, we have determined that there are, that it's still valid, and no additional environmental analysis is warranted, and our recommendation tonight is to approve a two-year extension of time for Development Plan 1904, Sutter Foods Processing pursuant to City Municipal Code Section 8-5.7106, resulting in a new expiration date of July 22, 2024. And then we do have Ryan here tonight, he is representing the applicant, if you have any questions for him or any questions for myself. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. I swear we just approved this development plan. Time flies. I mean, I remember like it was yesterday, believe it or not. So with that, any commissioner comments, questions, concerns?
I guess I'm looking at all of these, I was reading through it, are we talking just the economy, everything? Is that part of just basically what's happening, right? That part of it and the costs have gone so sky-high? Do you want to go up to the, yeah, to the, go up to the, I'm sorry, I just kind of want to hear a little bit from you.
Got to be on record.
Thank you.
Yes, Ryan Hutton, I'm the civil engineer for the project with Laughlin and Spence. So, basically, what, this was approved, I guess, right before COVID hit, and along with COVID came some issues with the market and driving up of prices on all sorts of building materials and development, so that's kind of where we're at. There's still a plan to move ahead with the project, but it has caused a small delay. We're still in the planning phases on the building and the site development, so we expect to have a submittal sometime before we get another expiration. That's kind of where we're at.
Okay.
That's a great plan.
Thank you. Well, yeah, fingers crossed, right? Okay.
I have one quick question, to refresh my memory, this is going to be a food agriculture and cold storage facility, what was the intent for the use of the facility?
The current facility is a walnut and prune processing.
Uh-huh.
And that's going to be continued on a slightly larger scale, they package, they process and package walnuts in the shell and ship them out all over the world, basically. Currently, they have a leased cold storage elsewhere in Sutter County, and they'd like to just consolidate all of their facility into one place here.
Is that in Sutter or Yuba County?
I think, I think the owner may have some things in Yuba County as well.
Not that it matters, I just curious.
Yeah, this facility's on Franklin, right, which is by my house, I mean, it's a very clean piece of property, even now, with the trucks going in and out, it's not too bad, so.
Forty years, I've always wondered what was going on in there.
Yeah. Now you know, it's going to be a cold storage, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
No questions, they answered all my questions last time.
All right, thank you. All right, well, any public comment on this particular agenda item? Seeing none, we'll take it back to the commission for perhaps motion.
I'll make the motion as stated. Do I have to read it? No, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no changes, yeah.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we'll move to next agenda item, number seven, consideration, a requested 18-month extension of time for tentative subdivision map 16-04, Yuba Crossing, and we welcome Mr. Doug.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Glad to be with you tonight. This project, the Yuba Crossing project, dates back, it's a 2016 applications, approved in 2017. At the time, it included a general plan amendment, a rezoning, and the tentative subdivision map to establish 53 zero lot-line, single-family homes, as well as some live-work units on about 8.7 acres. The site is located just north side of Franklin Road, just northwest of the Winco Grocery Store. The. So initially, the project was granted pursuant to the city code. You're for maps, so unlike the development plans on the last two items, with maps, you're given an initial two-year timeframe to file, to record your final map, but you're also given the opportunity for two 18-month extensions. And so, in 2019, your commission approved an 18-month extension, so they used one out of two. And then, in 2021, actually 2020, the legislature approved AB 1561, and due to COVID, for projects that had housing components, that allowed for an additional statutory 18-month extension. And so when you added all those things up, it actually made it so that the current map expires this month, but our applicant did file a timely extension back in March, and so they are asking for their second 18-month extension. Now, the project did have a mitigated negative declaration that was approved with it. Staff believes that that, there's been no material change to the project, so we believe that they, the project and the environmental document continue to stand, no changes is needed, and that the conditions of approval that were approved of the project are still valid. The representatives of the applicant, New Phase, is here to answer any questions you may have. I would note that they are working diligently on their map, and I would say, I think they hope to have the map filed and recorded this summer. So if you grant the time extension, that would give them until November 4, 2023. So that would conclude my comments, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Fellow commissioners, any questions for Doug?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner.
This is the property that's currently fenced, and we've struggled with as far as the condition of the yard, and so they've been doing some civil work out there, what's going on? What's happening?
So they've been doing, you've observed grading, you've seen the underground utilities being installed?
Okay, so they're doing just the civil work, do you want to give us an update?
Yes, hello, hi, I'm DaJay Chapman, I'm with New Phase.
Welcome.
So currently, we already had done all of our dry utilities, what you're seeing currently right now being done is the joint trench, we already had our pre-con meeting with PG&E, so that's currently under works. So there's already construction happening, we already submitted for our final map, we're just asking for this extension so that we can go ahead and finish through with that process, but there is construction already happening, we already have the house of plans approved as well, so.
So when you say PG&E, the conversation is underway, or they're actually scheduled construction?
Oh, no, there's actual scheduled.
Okay, that's a huge win.
Yes, yes, no, no, yeah, so we've already done all of our underground, all of that went through, I'm not sure if you saw some of that construction happening, and what's happening now is we're going ahead and doing our dry utilities. So we already have, went through with PG&E, we had our meeting with Comcast and AT&amp;T, so work is already happening on the site.
And I would note, from staff's perspective, it's because of the work they've already done that the city considers their development plan activated.
Commissioner Campbell, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
All right. And before you leave, please, we have one more question from you, from Commissioner Schaefer.
Just real quick, if you can refresh my memory, what are the price points of these homes? Do you guys have a rough idea?
I don't know if we have a rough idea at the current moment, I know things have changed in terms of cost for building.
That's what I'm wondering, they haven't gone up since.
I know that we're trying to keep it within whatever we originally were trying to look for, but we have not put together, we're currently in the works right now, negotiating with the general contractor, who's going to be the main builder for this.
Thank you.
Can you tell us who that is?
Ryan Embardis.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We're excited about this mixed-use opportunity, so, wonderful. Sorry. Any other questions, or if not, I'll look for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion for the recommended action?
Thank you.
With no changes.
Selman, a second, please.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, sorry. I'm sorry. I was making my notes, sorry.
Excellent, well, with that, it's passed unanimously, thank you, and then the last agenda item is the Yuba City Capital Improvement Project, 2022 to 2027, and we have been back.
Okay, so this is an annual presentation with a little bit of tweaks, the CIP, it really has to do with our capital improvements, our public infrastructure, and so through that, we, the annual operating budget every year, available funds are put into the CIP, and also considering the different funding sources, water, sewer, grants, general fund, road money, et cetera, and then that gets programmed out, and we typically do a five-year window when we look at those, and so a lot of these projects aren't necessarily new, but there are some new ones here and there. And so, it's the, under California law, the Planning Commission has the responsibility of reviewing the CIP to determine whether it conforms to the general plan, specifically the government code requires the commission to review the following actions for conformity: acquisition of lands for public purposes, any deposition of land, street vacations, and authorization of constructive public buildings or structures. And so, I'm not sure, some of the projects, once in a while, touch on some of these items, I don't know if the items I have before you are for this year programmed to have any of those issues, but I'll run through it, and feel free to ask questions as I'm going through it, you know, because a lot of times, if people aren't familiar with some of the projects the city's working on, I could definitely dive into the details on any of them. So, general projects, so this is typically general fund money, and these are really, they're not specific to water, wastewater roads, and so we identify them in the budget as general projects. And so, property abatement, this is a project account that really, it's a catch-all for cleanups, so when we have houses that burn, there's not insurance that we need to board up, we put a little bit more money, typically, we've been putting $50,000 in in a year, this year, I've asked for $100,000, and that's really to help subsidize, we've been coordinating with the Sacramento Conservation Corps, so there's the CCC, basically, we have them through a grant. Basically, we have them through a grant right now where they've been coming up and really helping us clean along the river and the levee and the bike trail. And so as that grant, as we finish up the funds for that grant, I've asked for a little bit more money to help subsidize that. Not as at a high level, but at a level that at least kind of keeps it clean until we find another grant, hopefully. General plan implementation, this is kind, this hundred and sixty-five thousand, this is actually grant money, reap money from Seacog. And that's money towards a couple of projects we're looking at to help with housing. It's housing-related funds to help with some zoning code changes, or look at some ADU requirements that we're helping to streamline stuff that involves anything we could do to help our planning documents for housing. The citywide decella, that's just, it's technology fund, a lot of software and a lot of systems. And so they're always taking a little bit of money and updates. And then the big one in here is really the payroll utility billing upgrade. So it doesn't really hit on any of those items, but it internally, it's a big deal, we're using about a twenty-five-year-old system that's tied to everything, we call pinimation, that's tied to the utility billing, to the old permit tracking systems. And so staff and finance are using ARPA money, so from the, some of the federal stimulus money to, to do this update. So that's gonna be a big deal for the finance department. Facilities projects, there's really no new structures, it's just ongoing maintenance. And so buried into these accounts at City Hall and then various improvements across the city, it's, it's painting roofs, gutters, you know, doing some general maintenance on, on buildings across the city.
Excuse me, Ben, sorry to interrupt, just for a quick reference, are these annual figures, like just for this next coming year, or how?
This is for, what's proposed with this budget, yep.
Is it a one-year budget, or is it a multi-year budget?
It's a five-year budget, and so on the budget document, it shows the current funding that's in the existing account, and then it shows the proposed funding for this year's budget, and then it projects out the next four or five years. So if we, if we see something like, you know, my annual abatement, if you look into the budget, the physical budget document, it shows that, that hundred thousand, I've got it programmed for the next four years going forward. And that helps finance know that that's gonna be the budget need for some of these ongoing projects. But if it's the Bridge Street widening, when we get into it, we set the timeline different based on the project-specific type.
Like that property abatement, is that a one-year number, or is that the five-year number?
That's this year's number, but in the document, it, it, it shows it going out, but it doesn't really mean anything because it's, that money's not real until it's voted on every year.
Right.
But, but it is in the document.
One-year number, though, that's how much you plan on spending in the one year, okay, thank you.
And so the proposed budget, that's really the number that's getting plugged in there this year. Okay, so community service projects, these are kind of the, you know, they're not the roads, they're not the water or sewer, but they're quality of life projects that are important. And so there's, there's, there's a good range of them, from at the senior center, at the Gap, working on infrastructure improvements, until the San Branham improvements with a bocce ball court. And then also Collins Corner, Maple Park is a big deal, there's a special needs park with some amenities that's proposed for that location. And then even some improvements at dog, for a dog park at Moore Park there. So at the corner of Cooper and Bridge Street, with the Bridge Street improvements, there's a lot of effort, and Ms. Essman probably could add to that, about as far as some of the improvements to turn that into a usable space compared to where it's at now.
Mr. Moody?
My, I'm live. Quick question on the hundred thousand dollars budgeted for the town, town center fountain, is, what, where's that, is that the existing fountain?
So that's the existing fountain, and it's really just truly maintenance, and everything's expensive. And so we've had some vandalism there that needs to be repaired, and then there's also issues with the electrical, the way it was constructed. It's a confined space, it's this huge vault, and then we're having deterioration of the electrical conduits. And so to get anybody to do anything nowadays, unfortunately, is expensive. And so it's, but it's, it's just, it's just maintenance of the existing fountain.
Thank you, sir.
Ben, I noticed that at Regency Park, they had some issues there with the splash park area, and I don't see that on our, our list. Is that a different funding source because of the?
You know, there's definitely operational budgets that, that, that he gets into versus maybe a new or an added, typically, this is, it's either something very substantial or, or new. But I definitely could follow up with Brad a little bit on some of those, I don't, these are more Brad's, I like to say piggy bank, that's, he's gonna tap into, and then engineering helps with public works on, on the installation, on some of the bigger ones. But I could definitely follow up if there's, is it just vandalism, or is it deteriorating?
No, it's not working.
Oh, it's not working, well, we did, we're starting to limit the hours. I don't know if that's, but I know there's some hour reductions with the new, with the new water conservation.
Question really quick. Like, Burns Foundation, I know that we're putting in some funding for like Maple Park, so the bocce ball, bocce ball, bocce ball? From what I understood, I thought that was a grant, that was recently.
No.
Yeah, from, from...
It is, it is a grant, okay.
Yeah, to our Special Olympics. It's reimbursed. Understood, thank you. Thank you. You should be sitting here.
Tell them the secret.
And then the senior center, it's, it's always falling apart, and so to be honest, so there's a little bit more money putting into that. Public safety, and so these are really fire and police oriented. The Fire Station Two remodel, there's a huge budget need there, but they've, they've broken it down into kind of phases, and they're gonna slowly plug away at, working on it. Fire station renovation repair, that's a general account that they have. Again, that's kind of a mixture of new doors and different, in the budget, they've itemized some of those to get to that number. Police Department, evidence storage, this is really kind of their third phase, second phase of their parking lot. And so when they did the parking lot expansion a few years back, we left a area up in the northwest corner, so they, they did the parking lot, we did the solar. Now they're looking to do that evidence storage building, and, and then they're still working on the K-nine improvements on the east side of the lot. And so this would be one of the phases to get that storage building. And then the fire station training grounds, this one's kind of cool, it's not multi-millions of dollars, but it includes a tower, somewhat similar to Fire Station One, where it's kind of this multi-story tower that they could train, have, have training for multi-story events. Instead of being, using the, that's updating compared to the Fire Station One. And then it has some conics boxes and different items for training and storage. Firefighter cancer preventive initiative, proper street. I'm not sure if I know what that one is. You know, I, I could follow up with that one, but it's, it's not a huge amount of money, but I'll follow up with the group as far as the details, us, fire department on that one. Okay, so street projects, really, these are pretty generic. A couple of the ones that have already been programmed, that are really the focus for the department over the next year is, so Bridge Street is starting construction, it's underway, ten million bucks. That's gonna play out over the next year. And then you have Walton Avenue improvements, where we have a four million dollar grant, that basically, that, with some Cherry Street work, is where we, we've received a grant, and then that's gonna be the priority to get through design, environmental, and then get it authorized so we could go to bid and start construction, hopefully over the next year. It's, it's probably gonna take us to get into a year to get to that point, but those are kind of the department efforts. And then, then really, besides some maintenance money that we're putting into different accounts that come through, is, the big item is, is probably Tully Parkway. We wanna, with development starting to come through, we're trying to reprioritize that street, that section to build Queens West to Tully Parkway, and then Tully Parkway down to Butte House. So ultimately, it could help relieve some of the pressure off of Blevin. And so we're trying to pigeonhole a little bit of money into that, and then we, we have some money that goes into general maintenance for trying to do some annual slurry seals and ADA ramps. It's not very much nowadays. And so it's a big deal, really, with the city and funding and gas tax, how it comes through, it's, we really are grant-driven on some of the big projects. And that's where we've been successful with Bridge Street for some money, with Walton was a big deal with the four million bucks. And then we're getting some money that we're putting in for the bike paths and different things, but for road maintenance, no, it's not. This is gas tax money included, yeah. And so I think SB one now is under a million bucks a year, which doesn't go very far. And then you got the TDA money, which is the money kind of left over after track, transit with the gas tax, and it's, it's really not, it's not a lot in today's dollars.
Just remind me, refresh my memory, this is Seacog, gets it, and then allocates it out to the county and the city?
For...
Is this just the city's portion of what the state takes?
Uh, you, you, I think I followed you, the first one nailed it, but I mean, there, there's a couple of different funds, though. So there's this LTF, it's gas tax, it's this complicated triple flip, negotiated, it's so much goes to the, so much of it goes to Keith Martin with the Transit Authority. And then after that, the pot split between the agencies with the county, where we, where there's some negotiation, where it's based on population and the amount of roads, and there's a percentage that comes in. And we, we're usually about one point five million on that, and then we take that little bit of money, and we, we try to leverage it with our Walton avenues and our Bridge Street things, and then, and then you have the SB one money where you, where it's supposed, which also comes through Seacog and is designated, but that's based on road mileage. And so... The other one is very complicated, and it's kind of a wag on what we're gonna get. Correct, yeah. So that's where we're at, so yeah, there's probably, I mean, you could make the, the need, you know, I've looked at the number, I'm afraid to look at the number now with inflation, kind of, it's been taking course. But we could probably easily do eight million dollars a year of maintenance, just to kind of keep the roads where they're at, with slurry seals and striping, and really, we're putting about a million bucks, a million and a half into maintenance a year. So we'll see. Water projects. You know, the takeaway with all of this, it's a lot of stuff at the plants, and then, and then, but I would say the big takeaway is the, I got the second groundwater well up here.
Yeah, two hundred thousand?
Second groundwater well. Yeah, the second groundwater well is two hundred thousand, but there's a lot of effort going on right now. Last year, we, a couple of years ago, we received a grant, and so it did seven hundred and fifty thousand, and they were putting in another two hundred thousand so that we could get, it's out to bid right now to put, to get that work. And then with that, under the second ground, we did an application for an ASR, which is this Aqua First Storage Recovery, which is basically an underground water tank, that we got six and a half million, six point three million dollars for. And so, so we're, we're, there's a lot of work going on at the plant to put a second groundwater well in to help our, just to give us more buffer with the drought. And then also with this Aqua First Storage Recovery Grant, and so that will be showing up next year onto that item, but there's a lot of work right now to get the contract in place and then figure out how the funding's coming through. And then you have, and then really, their priority project is water treatment plant, electrical and instrumentation improvements, so we're throwing some money into this account that we have available. It's just, it's nineteen sixties, seventies technology.
How old it was?
And we have just the software, the electrical equipment, it's, it's out of date, and so we're trying to do an overhaul with, with, in order, we have a similar project that we just completed at the wastewater plant a couple of years ago. And so it's kind of a similar project, it's gonna be five million bucks plus at the end of the, end of the day. And then the other one that's kind of just a nice project that you probably will hear about around town is this two point two, three million. It's listed under the Plumbus Water Tower Maintenance Project, but what that is, is we got the Cal Recycle, or it's a state Clean California, I think is what it was called. And we, with that, we're gonna rehab the water tower, repaint it, put the Yuba City logo on with some nice lights. But then as part of that, we also have money to put lighting on Center Street. So on Center Street, we're gonna have some overhead lighting, kind of crisscross it, and then we'll put some park amenities at the bottom of the tower, where there's a water feature and some murals and some different artwork down there. And then also an archway over the road, so we haven't quite figured out the specifics of the archway. Well, honestly, we told them to take this out of the water projects, but there, there is grant money that's gonna help with water, right? But, uh... Uh, no. But, but, but this is grant money, this is, this is grant money. Yeah. So, but it was kind of tried to, the DBA's excited, there's a lot of coordination with the DBA and down there, and then we're trying to figure out the logistics on this archway and what some of the improvements can be tagged into for it. So, so that's kind of an exciting one for downtown.
It's just depressing to see that, and see our road.
Where the money comes, right? Yeah, it's, it's different money. It's, 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 yeah, I, I mean, a few years ago, when they were pushing for that SB one, it was all things about road maintenance, hey, everybody vote for the new... You know, we get, we get it in, but it doesn't amount, it doesn't, the million bucks, we get the million bucks, it, it does help, but it, you know, everything just went up twenty-five percent, and went up twenty-five percent the year before, and all that type of stuff, yeah. Wastewater projects, basically, the two, there's a couple of big ones in here, probably three big ones, is, is what the department's working on, is that we have ARPA money that the council programmed, one point five money for this Bog Road sewer extension. And then there's a harder, do we have the harder one on here? Maybe that went through with the council item, not through the budget, but the, so there's two, two big projects going on right now. The Bog Road Sewer Extension is that, and the Wastewater Master Plan, the, the main, to help facilitate growth to the west, so for the Lincoln East Pacific Plan, for the, for Bog Stewart Master Plan, and then also the El Margarita Master Plan. We need infrastructure that, that brings the line from the sewer plant out from Bog Road, gets it across the highway, and then that, then that, that's a main trunk line that needs to be built in order to help facilitate the wastewater system and people connecting, and it's a huge cost. And so it's hard for small projects that come in, in Yuba City, everybody has these twenty acre, forty acres lots, and so for a development to bite that off and say, hey, we need a ten million dollar, you know, infrastructure line, it can't be absorbed, you know, on the small project scale. And so what the city's doing is, is trying to make efforts with some of this ARPA money to strategically get the line to a certain spot. So with this funding, we're getting it extended from Railroad West to ninety-nine with a lift station. And, and so that kind of helps plan for, well, that gives some options there to farther to the west that they could do pumping stations or different things, in order, you know, the next project would be to get it under the highway at some point. But, but right now, we're getting it to Railroad two ninety-nine, towards ninety-nine with a lift station, and then a similar project up at Harder, at, behind the high school, where we're trying to extend it down to Lincoln. And that, that basically makes a connection as a gap, we have this gap for a large line. Exactly, exactly. So the council's authorized money for that, through, through a staff report for ARPA, so Diana came with an independent action to ask for that money. Recurring collection, rehabilitation system, you know, that's just a kind of a standard project here, we got a lot of, three hundred miles of pipes, there, there's always a lot of problems, and a lot of, and everything's expensive. Even when you put wa, water or wastewater in front of it, just double the price, too. And so a lot of that has to do, like, lift, lift station improvements, you have a hundred thousand, but the recurring collection, we talked about lining, we, we lined a bunch of, on Garden Highway this last year, and I think this is the second phase of that. Yep. No, they, we do the, um, the epoxy coating, I think they have a different term than the slip lining, but it's a... I think they have a different term than the slip lining, but it's, they're, they're basically putting an inside out sock that's coated with epoxy. So it kind of gives it.
You don't lose as much.
Yep. Yep. And it's a little bit easier around utilities compared to pulling in the new line. Okay. So after reviewing the proposed document, project listing apparent with adopted general plan, it's staff's determination that the pro, the proposed CIP is consistent with the general plan. And our recommendation is that the commission finds that the project list is in fiscal year twenty two, twenty seven, Uba City Capital Improvement. Project budget is consistent with the Uba City General Plan and forward findings to the city council. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Ben. Any questions concerned comments for staff commissioners?
I just wanna, yeah, I, I, that's very informative. I guess one of the things that, you know, every once in a while somebody will say, what, what are you doing on the planning commission? And what is, I mean, this is great information. This is to show, I don't think people understand what the art money is. I don't think they understand where it has to go. You brought up a great point. You know, they talk about the tower and they're like, oh, my God, you're gonna put that money on that tower. And I guess it's just more of that education piece. So anything you can give to us to help educate that, if there's any little, you know, sound bites or just something to say, you know what? If you want a copy of what's happening with wastewater or water or what you said about Walton and Cherry. I mean, only because I sit here do I hear it, but I can tell you, I was walking around the neighborhood for something else. And those are the kind of the questions that keep getting asked, you know? So we were, you know, annexed in and we don't get any blah, blah, blah. But to be able to tell them, guess what? There is gonna be a stoplight, the roads are gonna be, you know, worked on. So I guess just from my perspective, I'd love to help spread, spread more message for you, so.
Whatever I could do, you know?
You're only one person.
I know, we try the bus tour, we try to send blimps, blips out here and there. I know Carm, I think, did a presentation the other night, but I don't know. For people that are busy and at home, I haven't, if there's any ideas on how we could reach out to them better, please let us know.
And social media is so powerful right now. These little tidbits, you know, thrown out there on your Facebook page or your Instagram page. I think those reach a lot, a lot more people than they used to, so. I think, I think that we, I'm, I'm hearing that we might have a podcaster starting. On the city's events.
You, you know, the, the department is busy and, and trying to make good efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner Silman. Any other commissioners' comments?
No comment.
All right. Well, you know how I feel about the city of Uba City. Public comment, please, Heather. I think we're the bomb, that's all.
Yeah, no, I wanted to go on, on the, actually, I wanted to say something about Uba Crossing. They left. I wanted to say thank you to them for, for bringing that concept with the multi-use and filling in an area inside of town instead of trying to grab stuff outside. I'm, I'm really excited. I can't wait to see what that looks like when they're finished, considering I live in basically the, the service desert. I live just north, south of, I live off of Lincoln, so I live just south. There's nothing out there, just nothing, nothing. Oh, yeah, like I'm gonna go and buy vegetables at Walgreens. Yeah, that's, I said, I know, that's the only place you can go though. Fortunately, but I can walk down there. But so the, the, some of the stuff that was on there, I just wanted to explain because you had some questions. So first of all, Collins Corner, if you haven't seen the design, it's really intuitive of, particularly for kids that have autism. I used to work in special education for, well, long enough. But the, if, if you have an autistic child, it's really hard to go to a playground that doesn't have like some fence around it or something because you're always worried they're gonna end up running off on you if, if, you know, like if something happens with a kid and they kind of freak out, they tend to run away. And this one will actually have fence, kind of like a cute little fence around it. And it's definitely needed in our community because we do have students that, that are affected by that. And I think that it's hard for a parent to, to go with the child someplace. And it's definitely important for them to learn more socialization. So I'm, I'm really glad that, that the city was willing to put the money in for that. We don't, we don't have to try and go and, and find it. And the dog park, so if, we have an off leash park, but it's not ours. The off leash park is on, currently it's, it's a community driven thing. I don't know if any of you guys know, but so the, my understanding is, is that the, the property itself was purchased by Caltrans so that they could build that.
That bridge.
That never came. So now they've redone everything and approved all the development south. It's not going to happen and at some point the state will sell that and we won't have any dog park at all. But the dog park is a completely different concept to a typical off leash park. If you want to, you can Google Bark Park in Sacramento. It is so cute. It is a, a, a community hub where people can come. It's a nice little fenced in area. Those, these things are popping up all over the nation and it's really cute. And it's just, it's not, you know, a big space. It was something that needed to be done in that area because they were going to do Bridge Street. And then you'd end up coming down, seeing this beautiful new Bridge Street and this green space with nothing on it. There's two blocks away, there's a playground at Lloyd Park. And then a couple more blocks from that is San Brennan. So we didn't need more playground space, that kind of thing. So this is a kind of a new idea. And Regency Park, I think the problem was they were ordering parts is what my understanding was. Cause it was, wasn't working at the end of last year either. I don't think it has to do with the water just yet. So, but I don't know if they've turned the water features on, so they may have fixed it or not. But I'll definitely ask Brad myself too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Moor Park? I, I don't, I don't know. Only thing I would add is Ashley looked up for me the fire prevention for cancer. And it has to do with the, we, we've just, we just did a couple of these. We use CDBG CV funding for, basically we have a decontamination area. So there is a storage area for the, the turnouts and it's an area where they could basically have them, take them off, separate them. And then keep them away so they're not, and so I'm, there is a lot of cancer hazardous stuff that gets absorbed into that. And so the intent is to have pretty much a tough shed or a storage area for those turnouts.
Who's turn? Go Carrie.
I don't have to read it, I can just say, I'm making a motion that we approve the action items presented by staff with no changes.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's no opposition, so we will move on to future agenda items. So I will call for Ben Moody to provide an update to future business items.
All right, so we have one cleanup item. I need a motion and a, a vote for item three, the agenda modifications for the record.
Oh, yes. Jackie, you got me all off.
Can't believe I did.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No modifications necessary, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so fut- future meetings. You know, this is, this is, we got a lot going on behind the scenes, a lot of subdivision maps, a lot of different things that have been talked about. Which is interesting though, because we've kind of been on a hiatus, a little pause for, because we're kind of getting these packages ready. And I think we're, it's kind of the, the calm before the storm a little bit. But the June eighth meeting is canceled. And the June twenty second, June twenties.
Sorry, it was just funny you led with this, we're catching. And then we're canceled, so.
And then with the June twenty second meeting, we're targeting Richland Village Development Plan Extension. So that has to do with Gus Passera and the Regional Housing Authority.
Oh, that's.
The project was funded through the grant and now they're working through getting additional matching funds. And they're looking to memorialize or extend that entitlement now with it.
They got TCAC.
Um, they gotta.
HSC, okay, and then they're gonna, and they're, now they're going for additional funding.
For these section, section eight credits? I'm sure I'm not articulating it right, but there's, there's some different.
Yeah, they're looking for vouchers to be project based.
Exactly. Um, and so with that, now that the funding's been, you know, the grant's been awarded, they want to come back now and request a two-year extension. So then they could start working through, make steps.
They still have gaps to fill.
Yeah. Town Place Suites, so that's a new hotel that we're looking at right now. And so this is the proposed hotel on Gray Avenue where the Enterprise Rental place is at. So it's, it's a nice little project and that we'll, sure we'll look at.
Where are they moving to? Cause that's one of the hottest little spots for enterprise.
Did we ever find out? We were asking them and I don't know if we heard. When we asked the, one of the people, they were like, I don't know, you know, it was, so I haven't heard yet. If I find out, I will definitely pass along. And then Highway twenty self-storage, so there's a, there's a project west of town. It's kind of been before the council. Um, in various, you know, it was gonna be an industrial park there. It's next to that storage there area, west, west of George Washington, south side of twenty, up against that existing storage facility. They're, they're looking at changing that to a self-storage facility with some RV parking in the back. That's what I got for, in the future projects. And then, I mean, I got a whole list I could go through. I don't know if it's appropriate time of just updates and some other future stuff that's brewing.
Yeah, give it to us.
Okay. So what do we got? So we got Onstott Subdivision. So there's West Onstott Road, so, so north of Queens, West Onstott, below Peas, Buvesta Neighborhood. There's a hundred and twelve single family lot subdivision that they're working through. So we've, we've done a plan review on that and then.
Drainage ditch back there, like retention pond issues and stuff? Okay, so.
There's definitely a substantial, some, some efforts for the, they have to expand the pond and then there has to, there's some fees associated.
It's kind of crazy when they built that last one, so, okay.
So West Onstott, you have Soho Ranch. So it's the corner of Lincoln and George Washington. So there's a hundred and seventy one single family lot with a, with a small neighborhood park in it. And so this is Lincoln Road all the way to the west of George Washington. I don't know how real it is, you know, as far as the infrastructure's not there yet and when it, when it will pencil out. But that is, it, it is a tentative map that's coming through. And we're working through that because it's one of the first projects that we're, we're trying to work out the alignment of Harder Parkway as it comes down through that, that section of road.
Yeah, please get some roads out there before you start doing that. I cannot.
And looking at.
I guess this stoplight at Cherry will help, where I live anyway, but. It's pretty, that's pretty far out there. Yeah.
It, it's out there always, yeah.
They're flying.
So there, there's definitely some infrastructure with the water and the sewer. How, how does that happen? And then what the road.
Isn't that where our strawberry guy is? Isn't that where he's at?
On the corner of George Washington, yeah. He's kind of over at the ranch house now.
He's got good strawberries.
Housing element rezone. And so as part of the housing element, we need to identify so many acres that need to be rezoned to multifamily. And so you'll, you'll see that coming before you soon. Hinson Rezone, so, so Hinson Ranch, that's the subdivision that's north side of twenty between Hooper and El Margarita. That they're getting busy with the single family homes. And what they're trying to do is there's the front office portion, so there's kind of the commercial office. They're wanting to change that to multifamily. And so, so we're working through the rezone and the general plan amendment associated with that.
Ooh, I want a little brownstone.
Something cool. I, I know, I know we're a little worried about the noise, but they could, they could work around it.
Do something that's a little bit more conducive to single family, but, but multi at the same time, you know? So just so that it fits in that.
So this one, there's not so much of the projects, we don't, but the density will be established. And so then, I'm sure when a project will come through, then we'll have a development plan and.
Try to keep it so that it's still.
So it matches and.
Yeah, yeah.
Spring Hill Suites. And so the, 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 the hotel that was extended here is our first item, is our business item. They're working, I know the owner's working, the staff are working through the building plans, but then also we're doing an update because he's, he's brought, he's bought a couple of adjacent properties to help with the parking. And then also he's increased the number of units by, I think, eight, eight or nine. It's not a huge amount, but, but with that, we're doing a, a small development plan update. And we're, we're checking with Caltrans just to kind of check the box and then bring that forward. Homes and Suites, we, that's, they, just above target there. They're still talking to us a little bit. I mean, they kind of come and go. It's all of a sudden, it's a rush, rush, and then they stop. But we're kind of working through a little bit of that still. The Ridge Estates by River Valley High School. So this is the other Mike Singh project, right? So, so yeah, so this is kind of a brand new one. So they're calling it the Ridge Estates Subdivision. So across, so it was the old, if anybody remembers, the Unity Estates, John Ocho Penny had a project where it was, it was twenty acres there across from River Valley High School. And so they're wanting to re.
You're talking across the street where they tore the old house down or are you talking west?
West.
West, okay.
West. So on the, on the west side of El Margarita, they're, they're looking for a rezone and, and pretty much to make, it sounds like some pretty high-end homes. And so, so with that though, the project before, they wanted to turn it into a condo complex. So it was, it was a higher density, it was a, you know, medium density with a R two zoning or with a special, with a special zoning. And so now they're gonna come back and say, you know, what they would like to see is a low-density residential.
Is there an expectation of any kind of changes to El Margarita when that new housing goes in?
They would be required to build the ultimate design of El Margarita for their, their portion of the road and then pave towards the signal.
It's not gonna continue towards Franklin? I mean, a widening of it at all or?
You know, so really they're supposed, they're, they're required to pay for their half along property footage. And then if there's any specific requirements that are, that are related to that development, then they'll have to do those offsites. And there's usually some reimbursement credits or what's applicable. The tricky part with that one is it's really zoned, right now it's, it, it was in the general plan as R one. They brought it up to medium density, which is a higher, higher intensity use. Now they're asking to bring it back.
Right.
And so if anything, their, their use is gonna be a little less or it's gonna be back to what the original general plan had.
So does that impact your housing element and the rezone?
There's concerns with that, right? And, and so, but it's, it's kind of a joint effort with their multifamily, the same applicant, the same owner with the commercial office going to multifamily across the way. Yeah. So we're definitely looking at that. Frederick Cooper Rezone, that's a cool little project that's finally coming through. There's a little space, it's kind of unused at the corner of Frederick and Cooper. They're, they're coming in, it's, it's zoned and the land use is a little bit odd. And so they're coming through to try to kind of fix that and be able to have some nice duplexes put. Are they multifamily? They're kind of, kind of little townhouses?
That is a perfect little spot for that on Cooper. Yeah, that's gonna be adorable. Those little houses are cute anyway.
Yeah.
It's right in, yeah.
Those bungalows.
Bungalows, yeah.
Where the Budweiser tree used to be, where like.
That's where those Uba City kids hung out, you know? That's the way it was.
I haven't heard of it.
Frederick Streeters.
Frederick Street.
The Budweiser tree, huh? I'll have to hear about that sometime. The, and then the, the last thing I have for the, for the future projects is we're working with the Uba Center Mall. They're trying to put a parcel map. They're trying to put a parcel map, a split parcel off the front, kind of in between um Panera and um, I don't know, what's the east? What's there on the east?
Jack in the Box?
Jack in the Box, um, somewhere in there, they're trying to fit um another building in there.
Oh, there.
So um, I haven't quite, you know, I mean, the initial take on it was the same thing, was like, how are we doing the traffic flow, the parking? You know, there, there's some things to work out, but they, they have submitted an application and trying to work through that.
I have two questions for you, Ben, real quick. Any, any uh status on O'Chupenty Steel there on Lincoln? It's a hundred and eighty-something or two hundred units he's got going?
Or it's up for?
I, I don't know, that's a good question, that's a good question. They, they're, they're, we were pretty much teed up for a, a new development agreement and development plan. I think as of a couple of weeks ago, they asked us to restart, but, but we still haven't seen anything. So the ball's in their court.
Okay.
And we're supposed to get some responses back from their attorney on the development agreement. Um, and it, and it seems to be at a standstill as of the moment.
And how about the uh, I want to say it was thirty-five apartments that we approved for the dentist site there near New Earth? Wasn't he gonna build thirty-five apartments in there? And I, I haven't seen any ground moved, I know we proved that with three years ago.
Movement on that either.
Nothing?
Yep.
Thank you.
You'd mentioned that Rayleigh's was looking at a remodel and a new tenant, has anything been?
I have not. Yeah, no- nothing exciting with the Rayleigh's being um, they were gonna remodel and do that, that kind of seems, it's gone silent. But we have the, what's it, the Boca? Oh, that's a Carriage Square. Boba T. And then, yeah, Coldstones is, is in process to come in there at Rayleigh's. Coldstone's Ice Cream.
Coldstone.
Yeah.
And has there been anything? I know, Michelle loves that when they bring that sweets into town. Um, has there been anything that's uh gone straight to the council? I mean, pretty much, no, nothing, yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I hadn't seen, but just here. Nope, nothing yet, that's good.
Come on over to the county, I'll.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can't wait to hear your report.
So would you like to just proceed to your director's report if there's?
Sure, sure, so um, I, I, I skipped to it a little bit earlier, but Doug, welcome Doug.
Yay!
That's um, that's, that's a big deal for, for me and the Development Services Department in the city. Um, it's um, um, very much appreciated and he's been a great asset here, he's been with us for a couple of weeks now, he keeps coming back. And so I um, I expect that you will be seeing him more often here um in this role, so. Um, annexations, annexations have been a big thing lately. I got a little pretty map here to kind of help. And so with LAFCO um in the development, these have kind of started to come through fruition. So since January, we, we've been pretty busy at LAFCO. And so um, this is basically a big portion of the Boggs Stewart Master Plan. The Boggs Stewart Master Plan technically comes all the way along the bottom here. But um, these are now annexed, and so this area now is with, is in the city. And so, so right now um, this keyhole is working its way towards closure. Um, and it, it, um, we're coming across there and we're starting to have some activity where um some of those properties are being marketed and, and looked at for different um commercial uses down in, in this area um with potential subdivisions coming in through here where it's being marketed and improvement plans are coming through. So, so there's some activity here and then so, but a big change with the city limits actually being um here. And so we're working through updating our, our software, um, you know, so the police department knows about the responses and the fire department and moving some signs, so when people are driving down the road now, the, with the Welcome Uba City signs, we have some small ones are gonna be moved. And then when you get to the west, um, here along Boge to George Washington to Lincoln, the blue is, is currently in the city limits and the yellow was recently approved to be in the city limits. So we're working on um the final um fees to the state and the map and Board of Equalization and the recording documents. And so this is soon to be in, I don't know, maybe a month, month and a half? Um, that now the city limits will now be squared off where Lincoln Road, um, the full width of Lincoln Road.
I was just gonna say in the middle of the street?
Yeah. Not, not there, we, we might have a little blip that's in the middle of the street, but a full width, yeah, full width, full width George Washington, full width um Boge Road to Sanborn here. And so um, so that is, that is um a big, big change. You know, as far as um annexations don't happen that often and we've, we've um worked through some big ones lately.
Quick question for you, Ben, is there an overall strategy that the city is using in determining which parcels they're targeting for annexation? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, there, there has to do with our Lincoln East specific plan and our Boggs Stewart Master Plan. So those have pre-annexation zoning and we have the master tech exchange agreements. But, but also with that, they're, they're, they're um, right now, these are property owner-driven and, and strategy-driven. Um, is because, hey, I'd like to just square this all off and have it all done.
That was the intent is to try to square it all off?
But as you know, you, you might have people that don't, don't like coming into the city.
Right.
And so, and so there's strategy with that as far as how many landowners could come in, how many can you force in? Do the council willing to force people in, um, et cetera? And so with these, these were pretty much all landowner-driven, um, as to why the, the boundaries are a little irregular. Um, what happened with this one is the blue was landowner-driven, then a lot of other landowners wanted to come in and the city said, you know what, we really want to square this off. And so we did a city application to square this off and thankfully we were successful um in doing so. Because if not, then you'd have these squiggly lines all over and the road would be.
Happen.
Half, half.
Yeah.
It's, it's not good planning.
Sorry, call the county.
Yeah.
That's it, yeah.
And so we've talked internally a little bit about strategizing, you know, going forward because there is. Siller is a big property owner over here, um, a- as you know, most of you know, we've, we've tried to annex this area a couple of times and failed. Um, and so maybe the strategy maybe is, hey, let's work on the west side. And so maybe looking at the west side, seeing what the property owners are and which ones we could square off. But it doesn't take much to kill an annexation when you don't have a lot of registered voters. And, and so um, there's a little bit of strategy on how we do that.
Thank you.
So what else we got? Hobby Lobby's open, um, I haven't been in it, but I've heard it's okay.
I've heard good things, yeah.
Good things?
Lobby?
Yeah.
How can that stress you out?
I have to go in for one thing and get out, yeah.
Um, Burlington and Boot Barn submitted plans? And so Burlington, Boot Barn, Five Below, they're all coming to the mall.
Barnes moving to the mall?
Boot Barn's moving to the mall.
That parking in that place is just hideous.
You know, that is definitely a common.
That's the hardest part about going to the mall.
Well, you know, that's why I sold my horses, I just got tired of trying to find a place to park.
I haven't seen.
I'd buy all horses.
There you go.
Sell my iron horses.
Boba, I'm, I'm gonna say this wrong, new Boba T Cafe in Carriage Square, um, has submitted TI improvements. And then we have the final maps we're working on for Faith Court, Domain Three, Hinson Ranch and Uba Crossings. And so staff's actively working on those, um, and they're real close to being finalized. Open counter software, this is kind of a big deal. Um, is, it's, I don't know how much, hopefully it's a big deal, but it's, it's a new software system. It's been around for a few years, but it's basically a um, it's a, it's um a TurboTax for um building permits. And so, and so it's for um, for business owners, it's for realtors, it's for um people just trying to figure out development. But it, it's kind of, it's an online platform that um, that walks people through zoning stuff and building stuff. So if, if, um, with a lot of graphics and a lot of simple um matrices that get you to an end result. And so it's, it's, it's where um, you know, if somebody wants to know where can I open barber shops? They, they could click on, you know, they, they start working through the process and then at the end of it, it'll give you a pretty map to show, okay, this is allowed in this zoning. And so it's, the, the intent is, it saves staff time from answering these questions that a lot of times are really subjective. And then it, it allows um owners and, and business owner, you know, realtors and business owners, anybody interested um that they could do that off hours, they could do that at home on their computer. And, and that's where the beauty is, is the front end to our Acela um permit software system. And the problem with the Acela permit software is you have to kind of be a power user. You kind of have to, it's, it's a little funky, quirky, you have to set up an account. Um, it's not, it's not friendly, user-friendly. And so this is that um connection to be more user-friendly and then it helps walk people through to basically pre-submit the application into the building, to be more online um service ready for it. So that's going on, we're trying to um, there's a presentation at city council at their next meeting on June 7th. And then we're hoping that with funding to come through and then um, work through that to have it come online later this year. If it goes as planned. General plan element, um, the housing element was certified, so that was a big deal. Um, in our world, there's a lot of work to get the housing element um first um updated and then, then back and forth with the state a little bit and certified. And so that came through, so we should be good for eight years with a lot of work in between. And then we have our um general plan update, so we have a general plan update that's brewing that um, we've done a traffic model update. And so um, at the last city council meeting, I recommended we establish a development ad hoc committee, re-establish. So a few years ago, a couple of years ago, we had a development ad hoc committee and we kind of worked through some updates regarding the underground policy and then impact fees. And so now, since that time, we've worked on um a traffic model, um, to fine-tune our traffic model based on the new land uses. And then also um some realistic stuff that we think that, that, that could have been updated since the 2004 model. Basically, it um shows the roads kind of what, what we want them to be. They don't necessarily need to be a four-lane arterial all the way to the sphere. They could be reduced at certain levels to be two lanes, or they don't need to be bigger than they need, you know, and then updated to reflect that the third bridge isn't coming, you, you know, some of those items. And so that has a big impact on um the tra- the traffic impact fee. And so um, so the development impact, so the development impact ad hoc committee um was established with um Mayor um Shaw and then council member Boom Garden. And so we're gonna fire that back up over the next couple of months. And then um, there, there'll be a recommendation to come through about the, most likely about impact fees and, and that model. And so that'll be tied into the planning commission as far as the general plan update, I mean, to the planning commission for recommendation. So that's really what I got and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You've been busy, busy, busy.
Any questions? All right, so with that, we'll move to the report of the Uba City Planning Commission and Sutter County update. So Uba City Planning Commission, that's Stacy, correct?
Actually, well, yes, Stacy goes over.
City to Sutter, am I right?
Stacy is our rep to Sutter County.
But now we have Carrie.
Yes, Stacy's, Stacy's from here, there.
We could probably lean on Carrie today. Stacy, Stacy was feeling ill, I didn't pass that along.
Did you get the message that he wasn't coming? Okay, good, yeah, he called me and I'm like.
Would you mind making a, a report for us so we are aware of what's happening?
Yeah, I, I would be happy to, uh, I, I, I think um two of the hottest topics right now are obviously truck stops. Um, facilities, certainly one of my um most exciting adventures of, of late was my first planning commission hearing with the one down off just south of Stewart Road. Um, that's still, I think, tied up in litigation. Um, both the planning commission and the board denied the request to approve that project and um, district attorneys going through the appropriate measures to get them closed down, shut, shut down and moved off. Uh, subsequent to that, there was a applicant who applied for an extension of his current truck yard. Um, I believe it's Oswald, is it, was it Oswald? Yeah, it was Oswald, yeah. The east side of Oswald between the old um. Yeah, yeah, so uh, great, great applicant, great project, um, willing to put in the time and money to, to do what needed to be done. So that was approved. Um, interestingly, as I'm sure you're probably aware, there's a, a request to amend the um, I'm gonna probably mess this up, the FPAC zone, F Park uh zoning out in Sutter that goes up through the buttes, which basically allows for farming, um, agriculture, processing, open space and recreation. Yes, uh applicant came in and wanted to amend the permitted uses within that zone to allow truck yards.
That, that was the, but didn't you cancel that meeting because of all the protests?
Yeah, we, we, we continued it, we didn't cancel it, we, yeah, it was continued to, I think, June 15th. Yeah, so that has been, um, I, I, just as a little anecdotal funny, um, we get public comments sent to us via email and we, we got some late uh the day before and I opened it up and it was this, this uh very accusatory, very inflammatory email about how the supervisor didn't pay the money and that planning commissioners are all crooked and.
Welcome to our world.
I looked at the name, no, I looked at the name and it's my sister-in-law and I'm, did you not know I'm sitting on the planning commission? For crying out loud.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, I.
Families have opinions.
Yeah, well, no, and I'm, boy, and she let it rip, but, so anyway, I.
We're truck yards, I feel, I do feel for them because just not a lot of spaces, but we have a lot of truckers, so.
And we need truckers.
And we need truckers, yeah.
I think the applicant's mistake, and this is just, this has nothing to do with, with, with staff input or anything else, but from my perspective, if they wanted a trucking yard, they should have come in and asked for a rezone of a particular parcel to pull it out instead of trying to change.
Do it the right way, yeah.
Um, but there's.
Doug's not there anymore.
Yeah, that, the applicant had asked for a continuance and then also county council because one of the questions I had that actual, uh, actually Commissioner Manuel brought up was can we legally do that given that that was a voter-approved zoning designation? So um, as was explained to me and, and maybe Mr. Libby can, can comment on this if I'm off-base, but the way that uh was implemented was the county has some leeway in evaluating what uses are, are not allowable and can change that list uh based on proposals and, and what is, but anyway, so yeah, that certainly plans to be another uh exciting June 15th meeting. And then the existing um truck yard at Paseo and 99, or uh Live Oak Boulevard? No, yeah, 99, yeah. Uh, applicant wanted to remove the requirement for a fence and, and that was um, that was a very long, long, long hearing. Yeah, right in the corner, yeah, on the south, southeast corner. And then um, we voted on it, had two abstentions, two nays and three yeses to keep the requirement in for the fence. And then halfway through, well, actually, we had, we had a motion to approve the next project and county council said, hey, we need to go back and open that up. Cause of the votes, we needed four, four yeses. So anyway, we spent another half hour, forty-five minutes and finally everybody went, oh, that's what we're doing. And then it passed unanimously, so they're gonna put up a fence.
Oh, good, I think.
Uh, we are still in process, um, if I'm not mistaken, on final adoption of, I, I keep looking at him cause he's like, I just, I drafted him like.
He's got a little history.
So uh, on the housing element, uh, I think that's gone back to the state and we're waiting to hear back on final approval, is that, is that accurate? Oh, it's certified? Well, there you go, there you go. No, go ahead, please.
No, I was just thinking about that on affordable housing. So that was, you said you did the housing, we do have some designated, right, for affordable housing for Uba City? Didn't we already go through that? Oh, sorry. Well, whatever that means, but yeah, you know, by your income levels or whatever, you know. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay. I hate that word too, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what they're dealing with in Uba County, yeah. Okay. Oh, okay, I got it now, cause it, it seems like in Uba County, there, there's a certain um, where the Caltrans building used to be in East Marysville and that, they're calling that affordable, your income level.
It's basically section eight housing, isn't it?
Yeah, no.
Well.
I mean, you have to have a full-time job, but you, it's by your, you know, you might make two thousand a month and it's subsid, yeah, maybe it is subsidy, I don't know. Maybe that's. Right.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, okay. True. Right, I remember that. Right, I remember that, yeah. Yeah. Oh, that's probably what's happening in Marysville. I'm sorry, Carrie, I didn't mean to finish. Anyway, you got affordable.
The only other two things I have is we had a controversial storage unit, a storage complex down in South County next to the specific plan area that finally got approved. So that was kind of nice to see that get put through. And then I think they're going to be breaking ground in the South County project this summer, start doing some underground utilities. There were some issues with the development agreement and the impact of school fees on commercial development and having the development agreements done before they got their entitlements. And I think that was worked out. So we should be seeing ground move.
Are we hearing anything Costco out there yet? Or is that just a dead? Is it back or is it there or? Yeah. We have a groundbreaking set, but I didn't know if they were going to do and. Oh, yeah, the traffic is off.
Oh.
Yeah. And now they're working on the levee in Marysville, that ring levee. So of course, everybody, you can't get through, so. Hey, I'm sorry, we're growing. It's just what it is. I, yeah. You know, once that bridge street gets all pretty and. Yeah. Oh, twice that's happened now, huh? Okay, Chairman, you better get us back on board. It's great information. See what happens when you don't meet for months?
I know. We have a lot to sketch up on.
A lot to talk about, yeah.
So you know, you know, my thing, moratorium. I want to see a moratorium on smoke shops because I know that's what's coming in. I'm telling you, it's not good for our community or our city, our beautification efforts, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I know you guys hate that because you don't want to govern, but in this case, it's like, again, go into those smoke shops. They are not selling tobacco products. They're selling.
Everything else.
Awful, awful thing. And so I know a friend who's bringing one here and I'm like, what? It's going to be right on Calusa. So they make money, yes, but that's not what we should have on Calusa Avenue, more smoke shops.
Come to the council and speak.
I mean, that's what I I would like.
Blake.
I keep talking about it, I know, and you guys are like, shh, don't say anything, but I can't help it.
I agree with her a hundred percent.
It's horrible. It's better than my inappropriate humor, so. Please do. I'm not trying to destroy businesses that are already in existence.
No more, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Dennis, right? All the painted, mhm.
Mm, good.
That's a help.
It does. Thank you for that. I just, it just makes me sad that we have forty of those entities and she can't buy fresh food near her residence. You know, I'm like, ugh, so.
Isn't.
And now you're going to shop at Costco. Sorry.
Is the charging station outside Whole Foods not operational? Yes, thank you.
Tesla.
Those are all Tesla.
Oh, those are, oh.
I didn't know.
You call it Whole Foods, I call.
DHS and Betamax, who's going to win?
All right.
So I have a question really quick.
Yes.
Um, on the Sutter County projects that are happening along the corridor on ninety nine, does the city get any say on some of the aesthetics? Because that's like the entry into our community.
In our sphere.
It's in our spheres.
If it's if it's in our sphere, they route it. And so.
Okay.
So am I saying that correctly? It should be anything within our sphere.
So like at the landscaping component?
It's distributed.
Have input on so that we can ensure that that.
Well, I mean, in Sutter's county standards.
At that level, there's any input. I think if there's a a proposed change in land use or a proposed proposed development project within the city's sphere, they're notified. And if there's a design component of that project, then that would be presented to the city to review. But somebody coming in in an existing use and wanting to, yeah, it would have to be an actual development project to have any input on it.
Because it's really nice to have that corridor be consistent all the way out.
Aren't those aren't those being redone?
We we took them out. There's there's some efforts going on to try to relocate and then maybe come up with some new signs. And so I have some pretty pictures. We have a landscape architect that's pretty creative that that helped us with the Highway twenty corridor. But he's also come up with some cool ideas for new signs. But then basically they got deteriorated, the rundown, and then now with the city limits, some change.
It's in my garage, right?
The one with the the trees, the trees on it? Well, I'm looking at trying to figure out what the wall is going to look like on Bridge Street. So we'll see if we can maybe come up with a cool design. Well, mostly consistent is just, you know, the straight, nothing, and with some pillars. There we go. We could have some dogs and cats, cats on a leash, maybe.
That's a dogs living together. It'll be total anarchy at the paw dog park.
Bringing my chickens then too. All right.
All right.
Thank you all. You can, I don't have a rooster. So thank you all. Let's see what time is it so I can, okay, seven thirty seven, media injured.
Thank you, everybody.